Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for Monday, August 8, 2016, at 2:30 p.m. I'd like to start with roll call.
Committee members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Here.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Present.
The agenda for the August 8, 2016, meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Thursday, August 4, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item 2, Introductions and Presentations. At A, Introduction of Interim Director of Community Services and Parks, Onik Bolanikian.
Good afternoon. Again, welcome to our CDBG Advisor Committee for the new fiscal year. And we are -- this year, we are without our previous Director of Community Services and Parks, who had led the Community Development Block Grant Program for 38 years. I think it was 38 years, his number. So certainly, it was a 38 years of significant CDBG improvements to the community and setting up social service programs, setting up policies and procedures for the block grant program, which will continue to use and utilize for the next year and continue on his -- certainly his vision with CDBG. So I'm sure he's maybe watching us today, I think, and he certainly misses the CDBG and the department and, of course, the various advisory committees in the past. But I did want to bring good news. We do have an interim Director of Community Services and Parks, and I wanted to introduce our interim director, Mr. Onik Bolanikian. And Onik, as we call him, has been serving since Jess left in July 2016 as the interim director. Just a little bit of background for Onik. He does have a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology, with an emphasis of criminology and corrections from Cal State University in Norfriedge, and his master's in public administration also from Cal State Norfriedge. Before working with the city of Glendale, he worked with the city of Los Angeles in the Aquatics Section. He started at a very young, tender age of 15 as a locker attendant, and then promoted to lifeguard, patrol guard, pool manager, and then became a full-time aquatic facility manager in 2000. In August 2003, we were lucky to grab him from the city of L.A. and hired him as a community services coordinator to assist in the operation of the Pacific Community Center, which you know is one of our CDBG-funded projects and runs numerous community events. After various promotions, in 2012, with the loss of two community service managers, Onik was given the task to supervise the Recreation and Community Services Section overseeing four community centers: sports sections, aquatics, the skate park, the Civic Auditorium, Youth and Family Services, youth programs, and special events. In 2015, last year, Onik was promoted to the Community Services Administrator overseeing the Recreation and Community Service Section, and again, currently serving as our interim Director of Community Services in Parks. And Onik has always been involved in the community, and his latest venture is a board member of the Glendale Healthy Kids Program. So I'd like to welcome Onik to our CDBG Advisor Committee meeting.
Welcome, Mr. Bolanikian. Any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Chair Arminian, members of the committee. I'm very excited with this new interim position and looking forward to working with CDBG staff and all the CDBG social service organizations that we serve and Moises and his staff, and hopefully, good things are to come. Well, I've got a lot of work ahead of me. I've got 13 years on with the city of Glendale, and I've got a long way to go to hit 38 years, but I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I want to welcome you to the committee. You'll find that it's a pretty lively committee, even though we're missing two of our members. We're also a very committed bunch to the community, and I think your background in the community certainly will help give some perspective. I also wanted to express my appreciation for Jess Duran. In his departure, I wasn't able to be here. I was out of town when we had the going-away party for him, and he will be sorely missed. And I hope I can grab his contact information from you guys, from staff, so I can send a personal note to him, to his appreciation for his service as well, to the community and with the committee. Any of the other committee members want to say anything?
Well, I know that your reputation precedes you. I've heard so many things about you over the years. I think I've shared them here, the good work that you've done out in the community and in the parks. Welcome.
Thank you.
Likewise, welcome. We've heard a lot of good things. We're looking forward for a new, exciting year.
Yeah.
Working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item?
Next, we have item 3, Minutes. At A, Approval of the Minutes of the October 21, 2015 CDBG Advisory Committee Meeting.
I move approval of the minutes.
We want to do these one at a time, or do we have to do them all together? Can we do them all together? One at a time? Okay. So right now, we are reviewing and approving the October 21, 2015 minutes, because I can't remember why we didn't approve them last time, but I think we didn't have them available at the time. Yeah. Any thing to add?
No.
Okay. So you moved to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Committee members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Item 3B, Approval of the Minutes of the February 26, 2016 CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting.
So move?
Have a second? Or do you want to review it first?
No, I've got a second.
Okay.
Committee members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Item 3C, Approval of the Minutes of the February 29, 2016 CDBG Advisor Committee Special Meeting.
Changes?
For the 29th.
So move? Not rushing. If you guys want to take your time, please do.
Second.
Committee members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Item 4, Oral Communications. I don't have any cards. Item 5, Business Agenda. At A, Action Items. At 1, Review and Approve Program Planning Schedule for the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Action Plan. At A is a motion to approve the program planning schedule for the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Action Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. The report describes the program planning process for the 1517 CDBG programs, as well as the other programs that run out of the office, and that's the homeless programs and the home program, which is run by housing. But by and large, CDBG is the large part that your role is involved with. And without going into too much detail, we do have a schedule behind the report showing the important dates that we are looking at for the CDBG Advisory Committee, and I just want to highlight a few of those, including the tentative date for the next community meeting, which we involve the community as far as identifying community needs. This will be, again, at Mann Elementary School on September 22 at 7:00 p.m. That will be, again, the meeting for the community needs survey and community needs assessment, and certainly welcome the committee to attend and other members of the community. Besides that is our next meeting for the Advisory Committee, which will be in October. October 21, we will select the chair and vice-chair of the meeting, approve our needs assessment findings from the meetings that we have, and approve the program planning RFP process that date as well, including the RFP for 1718. We'll also provide you the proposed funding allocations for CDBG programs for 1718. Right -- we'll discuss that as well in the federal budget, but right now, we don't have necessarily amount yet to identify, but we will be, hopefully by October, know a little bit more of what that budget might look like. A lot depends, of course, on our election. The next critical date is November 15, with the city council meeting to review the priorities from the CDBG Advisor Committee, as well as the planning schedule, and again, the tentative funding allocation plan for the CDBG program, again, November 15, and finally, again, releasing the RFP for the nonprofit agencies to submit proposals, which will be November 18. So your critical dates are October 21 for the next meeting, and of course, the council meeting. In 2017, we'll begin the deliberation process for the CDBG Advisory Committee, and these are the dates that we have scheduled for the all-day meeting on the 24th of February, which I believe is a Friday. Following week is a half-day for February 27. That is to review the capital projects, the first meetings for the social service projects. So those are two critical meetings next year for review of proposals for CDBG. Then we'll follow up with the publishing of the list of the projects and holding a public hearing in March, and then April, of course, is our city council meeting, tentative for April 11, to review and approve the CDBG priorities -- sorry, CDBG projects as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And then the program starts again in July 2017.
Okay.
I've just questioned. The city council approves the priorities before they come to us?
No, I'm sorry. Committee Member Ramirez, action priorities go to the city council in October -- or November. October, they're reviewed by the CDBG Advisor Committee.
October 21.
And then they are given to the council in November. So the priorities will come to you in October, based on all the input we have from the needs assessments.
The community meeting.
And the current priorities that we have.
They approve what recommend. Okay.
Yes, the first date for fellow committee members to look at is October 21. Make sure that if that works for your schedule. If it doesn't, we can look at an alternative date. Works for me.
Right now, I'm scheduled for jury duty, but -- and they're not giving me any more extensions. Next thing is jail if I don't show up.
We don't want that.
And when do you expect to send out notifications to the community for the September 22 meeting?
We'll begin to do our advertising late August. I don't have specific date, but we are confirming with the schools. As you know, they're starting this week, so there are a lot of paperwork that's still pending, pending they don't have any open houses or any other events. So right now, it's tentative. Then we'll begin quickly getting to the advertising of the event, but we should be within a week or two to get that date publicized on our websites. I do want to mention, we do have the planning department participating this year. There is a South Glendale community plan update, and that meeting will also be used to get some input on that community plan. So we'll have some assistance from our fellow department in planning to assist with some outreach and some community events.
We need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
It's -- what was the motion?
To approve this plan.
Right.
So move?
Second.
Committee members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Item 582, Review and Approve Allocation of $49,352 in CDBG Program Income to the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Annual Plan for Social Services in the Amount of $9,253 and $40,099 to the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Plan for Capital Improvement Projects. At A is a motion to approve the allocation of $49,352 in CDBG program income to the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Annual Plan for Social Services in the Amount of $9,253 and $40,099 to the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Plan for Capital Improvement Projects.
Karian?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. This report reflects a revenue account that's not used very often. It's a program income that we receive from funds that CDBG had granted sometimes up to 10, 15 years ago. These were old housing rehab grants. CDBG would fund housing rehab, and we would lend out 15, 20, $40,000, and it was a loan. And if that person moved or sold a home, the CDBG program will receive its loan proceeds back. Very few loans are out there still, but this is one of those loans where we have currently $49,352 in CDBG program income received to the city for the CDBG Advisory Committee's recommendation to transfer that funds to what we consider two areas. The first one is $9,253 for current-year public social service funds. HUD allows us to use the funds for current-year projects. They will not allow us to take the $9,000 and transfer to next year's 1718 program year, nor would they have allowed us to use it for 1516. So it's necessary that we program that, if the committee wishes, to this year's CDBG public service programs. The $40,099 and 68 cents can be used for capital projects for next year, 1718, and rolled into the regular planning process. Of course, it could be used this year as well. The staff is recommending that we use the $40,099 for next year as far as the annual plan. The public services could also be rolled over in case those funds do not -- are not used for social services this year into capital projects next year. We can't mix the two up. We can't move social services to next year in that app. It's not allowed under HUD regulations. So the remaining funds, again, and staff's recommendation, is to RFP out to the current agencies, social service agencies, the $9,253 through an abbreviated RFP, which we've done in the past, and we would bring back the advisory committee and have the committee decide, based on staff's reports on the proposals, to reprogram those funds to a current program. The $40,000, we're recommending to use for next year. So there is a motion for approval, staff's recommendation for this, for you to consider.
Is there a formula for this allocation that you use?
Yes. Committee Member Ramirez, there's a formula that you're allowed to use 15% of your total program income, which actually was the money we received from earlier in June. 15% for social services, 20% for administration, and the balance would be for capital projects. Again, it's very tricky, because they allow it to use one portion for the current year, which is administration, one for the next year, and one the following year. So it's a very tricky -- yes.
So a not a formula?
Well, we understand that program income for social services is very important to the community and to our nonprofits. There's an opportunity, especially early in the year, to grant those funds. Certainly, staff would like to utilize those funds for its best use, and our feeling is the social service programs would benefit from these funds.
So it does allow you to roll the $9,000 from social to capital if it's done for next year?
Correct. This year or next year, yes. You can choose to do that.
And but you can't roll the capital -- you can't do it the other way?
Yes, correct. That's correct.
Okay.
What's the motion?
The staff recommendation is that we do an abbreviated RFP for the $9,000 for social for this year, current agencies, and then the balance of the $40,099, 68 cents, roll that into the capital for next year, so that'll go on to the total amount that we get from HUD for next year. Right?
Correct.
Is that what we're agreeing to?
No, that's what staff recommendation is. I'm just -- we'll discuss that. My question -- one additional question I had from a logistical point of view is, if we did the abbreviated RFP for the $9,000 on social services, would we be able to meet -- be able to handle the decision-making on that at the October 21 meeting, or would we be meeting separately for that?
Mr. Chair, intent is to look at that date as the date that we would make the recommendations. If we can get them earlier and if committee's available, we might make it earlier than September. But right now, our timeline is probably best in October to get that going, and it gives enough time for the agencies to adjust their budgets and process all the changes.
And when we do that abbreviated RFP, it's really meant to see how current programs could expand incrementally using that $9,000, really is what we're looking for.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's a good point. Our intent is to look at the first quarter and make sure programs are starting off right and on the right track before you make your decision. I would also add that we do need to get council approval on these. These are called a consent item, just because it's more of a finance transfer, and so we would have to go to council as well to report the transfer, and that's done typically on the consent item.
And so that, even with that accounted for, you think we could make that October 21?
Yes.
Meeting?
Yes.
In the past, we've had kind of a bit of trouble giving up $10,000. My understanding was council would want us to maybe be more generous to select a program. So this is kind of going to be the same concern I have about not a very large amount of money to go out for an abbreviated RFP, so we'll see what the council thinks this time.
We did one at about this amount, right?
Correct. We had $13,000 last February, March, and we split that up.
And then before that, though, I think --
Even then, before, I think, the Home and Admin Funds. That was the Home and Admin Funds, and I believe before, the year before.
Before was the --
It is challenging to -- excuse me.
But they even pulled out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's challenging for the paperwork, but that's -- but it's a very important dollar amount for the agencies. Even $9,000 makes a difference on giving more hours to a staff member, providing more services to the community, so staff feels very strongly we could process everything and still make the program operate.
If we can do that.
Committee Member ADECEN, do you have any thoughts?
No. I think I like the suggestion with what the staff is suggesting, and I think I would want to make a motion, go forward with the staff's suggestion. $9,000, let's work on it now, and the $49,000, pass that on for the next $40,000, pass that on for the budget. I think that would help out actually with more organizations next year then.
Second. Committee Members of ADECEN?
Yes.
Mark Karian is absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Tashin is absent. Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Item 5B, Reports Information Only. At 1, Receive Report Regarding the Fiscal Year 2016-17 CDBG Code Enforcement Program and the Homeless Housing Project.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this report is regarding the CDBG Code Enforcement Program, which has been going on under CDBG for over 20 years. I would say more than 25, 30 years. It's a longstanding program that HUD has funded and the city has funded, recommended funding. However, in the last several years, it's been very burdensome for staff to administer the CDBG Code Enforcement Program, mainly because of all the requirements that HUD is putting on the program, such as narrowing your target areas, including a lot of onerous reporting requirements and record-keeping, and not allowing staff to go from one side of the street to the other side of the street, even though there's a building that's got some issues. And so we've been working with community development staff and the city manager's office, and the -- was agree with the city council this year that they would transfer the program to the general fund. This has been discussed a number of years through the committee, council meetings. If you remember, our April council meeting with the CDBG program, that was discussed, and that was a tentative recommendation. It's now under a budget that the Code Enforcement Program will be under the general fund. But it's a very important element to the CDBG program and the activities in South Glendale, that they continue to operate the Code Enforcement Program, and the staff from Community Development Code Enforcement have certainly agreed to make sure that we continue the Code Enforcement Program, even without CDBG funds in the South Glendale area, and target our programs and services areas that need assistance. But with that transfer, that allowed the $370,000 to come back to the pre-designated funding for the CDBG program under city council priorities. The main priorities have been, of course, we know, is parks. Second priority has now risen to homeless programs, and the funding that we're reserving for the $370,000 will be used for a program, a project for the homeless, and it's a permanent supportive housing project. It's typically a building that's operated to house previously homeless persons who are case-managed, provided services by one of our nonprofit agencies to receive very high-quality services, and it's part of our housing-first approach that HUD has initiated, and city follows, to bring homeless persons into housing and provide them services. We don't have a particular building yet, or -- but we do have certainly past examples of projects, including a former CDBG project, but we look at -- we're looking at a 12, 15-unit apartment building to acquire and to rehab and turn that into a facility that would assist homeless persons and previous homeless persons that we're using for the program. Now, the funding is not just CDBG. It will be a combination, and we did provide you a sample per forma. It'll be a combination of home funds, which are housing funds, tax credits, a mortgage, and other funds that we would use to cover the funding gaps. Right now, we're in a very preliminary stage right now for the numbers and assumptions, and however, we do -- are going to proceed with the project as we presenting to you as a report to council and giving council an update on the project and what we're looking at from our staff and what we would like to utilize our CDBG pre-designated funds for this and next year. It's a two-year project for the housing improvements. So this is going to be certainly a high priority for our section, our department, and housing as well, to begin to provide a building for homeless persons with support services. Again, examples have been something that Essentia did a couple of years ago, 1911 Gardena, which they used CDBG funds for the relocation, their own funds for the acquisition, and home funds for the rehab. So it's a model that we've seen. It's been very effective, and it certainly will help with the homeless situation we have in Glendale. And with that, I also added a section on our homeless count, and I won't go into too much detail on that count, because there is a thorough report done by staff on the homeless count, but that homeless count was done in January 2016. 240 persons were counted as homeless. 201 were adults, and 39 were children. So we continue to monitor this homeless situation, and staff is recommending to council and to utilize this per forma as a measure of beginning to acquire the funds and then seeking out buildings that we may be able to acquire in a couple of years to provide the building. Certainly, now, of course, if funding arises that are available right away, certainly we would move on that much quicker than two years. Right now, it's our plan to utilize the next two years of CDBG funds for this project as we move along to 2017-18. So the current funds, 2016-17 for the project, and 2017-18 for next year.
So that's the 370 times 2?
Yes, approximately. We don't know what the --
And that's where you're getting the 740?
Do we have any buildings that we own right now? Qualifying?
Committee Member Ramirez, we don't have any buildings or land right now that would qualify or meet the needs right now. We would have to acquire private building, private apartment, and work with the nonprofit, which will need to select -- apartment, and work with the nonprofit, which will need to select as well to acquire that building.
And how does that process work?
The process for, well, right now, typically, we do look for a developer slash nonprofit that would do a joint project with the city to acquire the building and come in with some leverage. And our leverage would probably mean their tax credits, some mortgage funding, and maybe some other possible cash funding to complete the project. So it's a joint project. And once we enter agreements with the nonprofit developer, then we can begin the acquisition process. But it does take.
So the first step is to find the partner. Then you'd go after the actual?
Correct.
And the financing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
So I have a kind of a broader question here. And I brought this up last year when we were doing the extra services because of prospective El Nino that didn't materialize, which is, to what degree, I mean, in this study, it says 240. To what degree is the 240 uniquely homeless who are in Glendale versus as we do do more programs, you can start to attract more homeless to come to Glendale because there are programs? So you, your problem never, you never solve the problem because the problem gets bigger. How do you look at that issue in terms of those who might migrate to Glendale because there are more services? And so you're kind of creating this never-ending cycle as opposed to solving the problem?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to invite Avex and Valian, our community services manager, to answer that question. She's certainly an expert on this.
Thank you, Mr. Kurio. Chair, I'm Marion. Members of the CDBG Advisory Committee, Mr. Brolanikian. The 240 represents persons that are homeless in the city of Glendale. Currently, we have about 80 unsheltered Glendale homeless persons. So all of the, those 80 that are unsheltered would need housing in order to get off the streets. But even with that, the variance between the 240 and the unsheltered are persons who are homeless in the city of Glendale, and they go through the different programming. That's an emergency shelter, a transitional housing, and then hopefully often to permanent supportive housing programs. The winter shelter program in itself served about 110 homeless persons at any given night, and that was the maximum capacity. About 40% of the participants are Glendale residents. So about 40% of the 110 were Glendale residents.
And where does the rest, the 60% come from?
The participants come from the community nearby. That's the city of Pasadena, Burbank, LA. Homelessness is a complex challenge, and people typically go to services and cities that are safe and shelters that are available. And because of the El Nino anticipation and the reasons for that, Glendale has been hosting a winter shelter and expanded this year to 110 persons.
So how do you pursue this problem since it's a multi-jurisdictional problem? How do you tackle it from a multi-jurisdictional perspective instead of, for example, we came up with our winter shelter here, which, like you said, 60% attracted 60% more homeless because we had, because we had the solution. So how do you deal with this on a multi-jurisdictional level?
Chair, I'm Marion. Members of the CDBG Advisory. City of Glendale Continuum of Care is part of the Los Angeles, LA County systems, which is compromised of Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, 88 cities under that continuum, Pasadena and Orange County. Most of us all come together to develop programs. And oftentimes, there is not enough housing for, currently, that there's about 40,000 in the LA County that are experiencing homelessness. And so unless we can develop housing for 40,000 folks that are currently homeless, the challenge is difficult to be able to house the clients. Communities like Glendale, Burbank, and LA, and Pasadena come together, identify developers who are interested through this type of programming, tax credits, other funding sources, develop housing. And so the way it works is the most vulnerable that are on our streets in the city of Glendale, the first 15, the first 18, will have an opportunity to get into this housing program. Unfortunately, due to economical situation, there are some people who are also at risk of becoming homeless. So we tend to assist those that are chronically homeless on the streets with Housing First models, as Mr. Kurio mentioned, and then try to work with those that are at risk to prevent homelessness and continue to transition some of them out of programming. The LA County Plan initiated about 46 strategies, and housing is the number one priority, which most communities are developing, purchasing land, and potentially rehabbing existing motels to be able to serve the chronically homeless persons. And Glendale is part of that leadership strategic plan. We do apply for the funds that are available that will be issued through the LASSAS RFP process. And our nonprofit agencies are able to also participate in that programming. And there's about several billion dollars available to the county to address homelessness as it's become an emergency crisis.
And then, so out of this particular project, some of the funding is going to come from that pool of money?
So potentially, a nonprofit, Chair, I'm Marion, potentially, a nonprofit organization can apply through the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority's RFP process to bring in the additional $250,000, for example, that's a gap. And also, part of our Continuum of Care application that we annually apply for federal dollars to continue to fund the existing projects, we do apply for new projects. And that's another opportunity and funding that comes from the federal government, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And so partners all come together to be able to address the need. Again, it's one person at a time. And so housing for 15 people will address the 15 most chronic homeless individuals that are on our streets any given night today in Glendale.
And there are some, though, that, you know, don't want to be housed, right?
Chair, I'm Marion. To answer that question, I'm not sure if there's anybody that doesn't want to be housed. I think the challenge is that some of our chronic homeless individuals have severe substance abuse, mental health, chronic alcoholism, or drug use. And because we don't have the housing readily available, and it takes time to be able to process through the systems, and landlords willing to work with homeless participants, they often, it's easier to stay on the street than go through that process. But if you were to offer anyone that's homeless housing right now, I'm not sure if that anybody will actually decline that offer.
So what you're, you're saying that we wouldn't be able to service the 40% of Glendale without this funding coming from the coalition, the federal government, the county, whatever?
That's correct.
Because the 740 is only a small fraction of the total amount needed for this project at the end of the day.
I understand that Los Angeles has the highest number of homeless in the nation. So I think we've got a task, and we're addressing it. I think we can be pretty pleased with the fact that we're doing that as a group.
Yes. Any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. Going back to the funds, 740, we're allowed to house that money, put it aside, and wait for until we find a particular property or the building that may take two, three, or four, five years down the road, per se, if that, we're allowed or not under any kind of regulation, hot regulation, that we're not, we cannot, or we can keep the monies on the side, savings, basically, until the day comes?
Mr. Committee Member Avadiscian, yes, we can. We don't want to go five years or four years. I think two years is our timeline because then it'll take another year to expand it. So we do have that opportunity to bank the money, which is essentially what we're doing. And we've done that with our park projects in the past, to bank the money while we obtained the other funding. What I think I failed to mention was the cost. It's about a $7.5 million project. So CDBG, as the chair mentioned, would be about 10% of that total cost, and the rest are going to be from outside sources, including the tax equity funds and debt by the nonprofit and other sources. So we're really paying just 10% of the cost right now. We will, we will bank that funds.
And this is, is this in lieu of or completely separate from any potential winter shelter that we might run again this year?
Mr. Chair, this is totally separate. This is separate from winter shelter or even our emergency shelter concept. This is a permanent apartment building.
Other questions?
I think that covers it.
Thank you.
Next item, 5B2. Receive report regarding status of current CDBG capital improvement projects.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, this time of the year, we provide the committee a report on the capital improvement projects that are funded by the committee. And certainly, during that deliberation process, you certainly have a lot of questions, and I don't have very good questions to follow up on. And we do want to give you a progress report, which we have in hand of all the CDBG projects. And I would say, by and large, except for the last project that we're doing for the city, the Palmer Park project, these are all community projects, which the committee has certainly made an effort to fund and utilize our available CDBG funds to help the nonprofits with their community centers so they can expand programs, improve their centers, and in the last several years, cut down on costs. So those costs mainly have been the solar panel projects and used for their operations. I don't want to necessarily go point by point on these if there's questions on the projects. I would say the Palmer Park is certainly our highlight of our program right now because of its intensity. And it's a very active project right now. We're about 45% complete. It will have a new course irrigation and a new basketball court, skate area, and a small waiting pool, and improved picnic areas. And we just finished the playground equipment. It'll have a beautiful shade area for kids to play on. Very active park. Unfortunately, it's still under construction, so the community is utilizing other parks for their services. But that's certainly, it's anticipated being completed in November of this year. CDBG, of course, has about $1 million involved in a $2.6 million construction project. So it's a very significant amount of CDBG funds for us. But that's our, currently, our remaining CIP CDBG project, except for the loan payment and the new homeless housing project. Besides that, the other projects are either completed or underway to get started. And some of those projects are from the previous year funds of 2014-15. And our projects with Home and Edman, the bathroom projects really turned out very nice, as well the Inventist project with their bathroom. So projects are being completed. We've had challenges with our bids, and you'll notice in several of these that we had to rebid twice, or once rebid it because of pricing coming high. And we had to really look at the scope of work and change things. So as the construction industry continues to be, I won't say competitive, but if prices continue to escalate, we've had to be very creative and be allowed to give opportunities to the nonprofits to rebid their projects. And by and behold, that strategy has worked, and that we did complete a couple of those projects, including one of our newer projects, and that's a solar panel project at the Home and Edman ROT Center. And that was recently done just this last week. So that's a very nice project to model for the other agencies to follow for their solar panel projects that are coming up. So that one is done. And of course, you can't see it unless you're up there on the helicopter or see it from far away because it is on top of the roof. But that's a very nice project which will be completed. And then we will follow with some other projects this year. We do have six new capital projects for 16-17. So besides the four that we're carrying over, we have six new projects. Those are on your list here, but we will have about 10 capital projects that we're working on the next fiscal year, which is, would be very interesting and very challenging with the projects. But we really think these will make significant dent in the improvements of the nonprofits and the clients that they serve or they communicate. So if there are any questions on this, I'm glad to answer any questions on this.
So the Door of Hope solar project that says December 2016?
Mr. Chair, that's our anticipated timeline. We're currently in the design stage right now and getting all the environmental's approved and completed. We did finish their, I guess, plumbing project in May this year, and we certainly want to continue on with their other projects.
And we also funded Essentia, right, partially for?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair. That's a solar panel project. They did receive their matching funds from the county. So it was very prudent for the committee to approve the funds and allow the matching funds to come in to complete their, the rest of their project. Which, again, we're starting the design process now for their panels, and that would go on this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Maybe the solar projects can send us, bring us pictures so we can see it next time.
We can forward that to the committee. I actually didn't go up on the roof, so I get the pictures from the roofers. And yes, it's quite interesting how they put the panels up there.
Yeah, I think it would also be good to see as time goes by, what the actual cost savings, because it's meant to offset other operational costs, right? So it'd be good, it'd be interesting to see what sort of costs it's offsetting over time, you know, to see the impact that the project's having from a program perspective as well.
Absolutely, yes.
Other questions?
Next item is 5B3. Receive report regarding summary of fourth quarter performance reports for fiscal year 2015-16 CDBG social service programs.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, I included here a report in a spreadsheet format of the projects that we completed for social services for 15-16, again, ending June 30 of 2016. So these are the programs the committee recommended for funding last year. By and large, these were, these are the projects that we continue to implement this current year. By and large, we have met most of the goals and numbers for the agencies. We do have two projects that were some concerns, but they seem to be back on track. And we've notified the agencies, alerted them to our concerns, and they're working on improvements to implement the projects on a timely basis and meet the numbers served. And those were the Loews and Fishes Homeless Prevention Program and the newer, well, not newer program, but the CAS Counseling Program, which we had increased funding to serve a second school. And, but by and large, they did not meet their numbers this year for their program. So we are working with them closely to make sure they're working with the schools, because they will have a third school coming up as we increase additional funding. So we want to make sure we address that concern and provide them the guidance and assistance. Of course, one of them being that they work, and we work with the schools closely to make sure they're serving the numbers that they need.
Do you have a sense of what the problem was with each of them?
The Loews and Fishes program, Mr. Chair, did start off a little slow based on the, a little bit of, and I don't want to call it turnover, but there was a staff member that was, that was leaving the program. So some of the, the numbers were down because of that, and also the numbers just weren't coming in for case management. Part of it because of a different program funded by our homeless services, it's ESG funds, were a little bit more stringent in their requirements. So they used both funds. So you have one stringent requirement for ESG, which is homeless prevention, and then the CDBG has to be a little bit stringent as well. So there was some difficulty in getting additional clients because of those issues. So we're working with the newer person who replaced the case manager, Laura Young, who had been there for a number of years, to make sure that their numbers are being addressed. And certainly, they are here in the audience if there's questions from them. But something we want to address as well. Again, we certainly think it's doable. However, we might need to make sure that the fact that the stringent requirements However, we might need to make sure that the fact that the stringent requirements in the ESG program don't impact the numbers served on the CDBG side. The CAS program, we understand that there might have been challenges with getting the schools to provide the kids to get involved with the program, or completion of forms weren't done, there wasn't follow-up on some of the administrative steps required to get kids enrolled. So this year, we're going to make sure we work with them, meet with the schools early on this year, and make sure they understand the importance of getting referrals and assisting the staff of CAS to complete forms for the kids and the HUD requirements as far as their income verifications and all that. So that'll be another opportunity for us to work with CAS to implement the three programs this year to three schools. That's been one of our concerns.
Let us know if there's any progress by the next October meeting.
Yes, we'll give an update on those, too.
That'll be good. Other questions?
Next item is 5B4, receive report regarding status of fiscal year 2017, 18 federal HUD budget.
Yes, Mr. Chair, every year, I come up here and I am hoping I'd have, you know, at least some definite news on our budget, but I don't. The federal budget, as you know, is probably in a stance deal until the election in November. There has been appropriations by the committees in Congress, the Senate, and House, but we believe that it's going to be held until the elections. However, our federal budget ends October 1st, 31st, so there'll probably be continuing resolutions. After our changes in the budget, we certainly let the committee know, but we should have a definite answer in October meeting as far as what we might expect is our funding. But it's really kind of waiting on the election, as we are a federal entitlement program, and we do get money from Congress as directed by the president, his budget. So right now, we are a little bit on a holding block until the election.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is item 6, committee staff comments.
Comments of anything?
I miss our two members.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment really quick on just reminding again the committee of the February 20, February 22nd, the September 22nd advisory public hearing for the community.
Community meeting, yeah.
It's a very important community meeting that we certainly invite the committee to participate in, and we'll hopefully have some good response in the committee from our joint partnership with the planning department, which I think is great to have them involved with our meetings. And we'll continue to advise the committee of any community meetings. We did have National Night Out. I think this time I failed to inform you all, but hopefully you were able to hear the news about those. Those are very important committee meetings, where they do have surveys going on there, and very good to get involved with the community meetings. Other than that, if you don't have anything for the next few months projected for CDBG other than our September meeting coming up?
As soon as you have a flyer on that, if you could forward it to the committee members so that we can kind of distribute it.
Yeah, what's the address on Mann?
I don't remember their address for Mann Elementary. I'm going to have to get that to you.
Is it down there?
It's down on, I'll do a Google real quick on that. It's down on Acacia.
501 East Acacia.
501 East Acacia.
Is that where there's no parking?
Parking is challenging there. We do want to make sure the school opens up their parking lots and make sure that's open. So that is, that is one of the, we do have a lot of neighborhood persons who come and walk, so that's one thing that they do from that neighborhood, but just parking is a little challenging for-
Very true. I went the last year. It was, it took me an hour to find a parking.
Oh, jeez.
For an hour of meeting.
Circling.
Had to be dropped off a year before.
Is there a reason we do it there versus somewhere else?
The area.
We, well, that's certainly up to discussion as well. We have used that school because of its layout, and one of the things we do have is breakouts to different rooms. So we like to break out into different focus group meetings, but maybe that's something we could look at, because parking is challenging in most of our sites, and whether it's some of the parks there in Maple, we know the Palmer's being used, so maybe it's something we could look at if there's possibilities of other venues. But right now, that's one school that we really like as far as its layout. We could try Roosevelt, maybe some other schools around it for parking.
Would you try and do it in a school in South Glendale?
Certainly, it's, South Glendale is our target area, and that's one of our main target areas in that neighborhood for improvements. But certainly, parking has been a concern of the residents and, of course, the committee members and staff, so.
Roosevelt possibly would be an option. They do have a parking. There's some street parking, but they actually have a parking lot, so.
Or by the Pacific Community Center.
We can look at Pacific, Ceredo Elementary, Pacific, Maple. We could look at all those locations, but we like to keep it at South Glendale.
Yeah, definitely.
And actually, some of the residents do walk to the meeting. That's a plus.
Yes, we have half-walking, half-driving, so sometimes-
Yep.
-the ones that it's too far won't come because they don't have vehicles at that time for the day. So it's very challenging, unless we do two hearings and-
So the committee can stay home.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll keep us posted, get us the information as soon as you have it, and then we'll help in attracting participation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
No. Hope we adjourned?
Okay. So moved. Meeting is adjourned.